And innovators, just like its founder Abbott Kinney, will continue to make history. And if Joel Silver has anything to say about it, it'll be making a lot of movie history. The production studio will create 25 jobs today, with the potential for many more post-production jobs as films are developed. Joel Silver says he also wants to create a program with Venice Charter High School to expose students to all aspects of the filmmaking industry. The city of L.A. has long banned the sidewalk sale of pets, but a new measure targets pet buyers as well. As Anna Marcos tells us, city leaders are starting to crack down on violators.
No doubt, they're cute. Who can resist a wide-eyed bunny, or chicken, or puppy, or kitty for sale on a downtown sidewalk at bargain rates? Well, if you're buying them, it just became a crime in the city of L.A. Animal Services workers are handing out 7,000 flyers to educate residents, especially in the downtown garment district and Venice Beach, two places where the problem is the worst.
Many of these animals are not vaccinated, have been taken from their mothers too soon, or may even carry dangerous bacteria, or salmonella.
You don't know what you're purchasing. You don't know where that animal came from. You don't know if that animal is sick or has some type of disease.
The new law had been in the books since summer, but it had not been strictly enforced. Now that signs are up and these flyers are getting handed out, buyer beware.
Not only now is it illegal to sell these animals, it's also illegal to buy these animals here. We want the word to get out to every mother, and every father, and every child that's coming down here. This is not the place to come and buy an animal.
Have you ever bought an animal on the street?
Never, and never planned to.
From here on out, the illegal sale and purchase of animals on L.A.'s streets is a misdemeanor, with fines up to $1,000 and jail time of up to six months. City leaders say there is a happier alternative to buying on the street.
Come to one of our city animal shelters, adopt a dog, a cat, a bunny, a turtle.
City leaders remind would-be pet buyers that by adopting, they not only save more of L.A.'s shelter animals from euthanasia, they will also be keeping themselves out of the doghouse when it comes to the law. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
City leaders say they are also working to strengthen puppy mill laws and other measures to help L.A. become a more humane city when it comes to its pets. A winning treasure comes to City Hall for a quick photo op. As Rasha Goel tells us, it's not every day that the Stanley Cup makes a visit.
It was a special treat for city officials, city employees, and their families who got the opportunity to take a picture with the one and only National Hockey League Stanley Cup when it made its way to City Hall. The Los Angeles Kings won the Stanley Cup Finals in June, their first championship in 45 years.
I've always wanted to see the cup, like be next to it. So it's a huge thing for me.
And while anyone can take a picture with the Stanley Cup, only two people can handle the silver treasure: the Kings' president of business operations and NHL Hall of Famer Luke Robitaille and its guardian Mike Bolt.
What made it very special, I think, for the whole city of L.A. is to see a team that would come out and play as one unit and have success.
Since the 1914-15 season, the cup has been won a combined 94 times by 18 active teams and five defunct teams.
Unlike the trophies awarded by the other three major professional sports leagues of North America, a new Stanley Cup is not made each year. Winners keep it until a new champion is crowned.
The original bowl was made of silver and is 7.28 inches in height and 11.42 inches in diameter. The current Stanley Cup is topped with a copy of the original bowl and is made with a silver nickel alloy. For many, clicking a picture of the silver beauty is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
The cup was last in City Hall in 2002 when the city hosted the NHL All-Star Game. A Los Angeles-based company is celebrating a milestone by contributing to some of the city's schools in some of the toughest areas in town. Cindy San Luis takes us to Dolores Huerta Elementary School with more.
We believe that our kids can fly like eagles, that they could soar like the astronauts and touch the stars and follow their dreams and be anything they want to be if they work hard.
And because of that, Mayor Antonio Villaregosa started the nonprofit Partnership for Los Angeles Schools in 2007. Partnership for L.A. Schools is a collaboration between the city of Los Angeles and the Los Angeles Unified School District to turn around some of the city's lowest-performing schools and create a model for doing so district-wide.
Oh, what do we have here? My goodness, look at that. The Partnership for L.A. Schools, Mercury Insurance Group, $250,000.
You are not limited. You're limited only by your mind and what you decide you want to be limited to. So you can achieve everything you can conceive.
Thank you to Mr. Joseph for investing in our schools. Thank you for giving us the tools so that these young people can go further faster.
The money is targeted for the partnership's Blended Learning Program, which includes 22 L.A. inner-city schools and impacts 16,000 students. The strategy is to use online learning programs to support teachers who need to reach students of varying levels within the same classroom. The program seeks to improve student outcomes in math and English language arts through the use of software programs.
According to the state, a successful school scores 800 on the Academic Performance Index. It's a high number. We've doubled the number of schools at 800 in the last seven years.
And with the help of the quarter of a million dollars donation, the Partnership for L.A. Schools can continue to guide tomorrow's leaders to a path towards success. From the Dolores Huerta Elementary School in Los Angeles, I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. this week.
Los Angeles is leading the way in giving residents healthier choices when it comes to food. Rasha Goel has more on how city officials are pledging to tackle the obesity epidemic.
Los Angeles is committed to becoming healthy. The city recently adopted a Good Food Purchasing Pledge, a policy aimed at giving Angelenos better options when it comes to what they eat.
By instituting the Good Food Purchasing Pledge, we can vote with our dollars for food that is healthy, fairly produced, and sustainably grown.
The policy urges institutions such as schools and hospitals to commit to meeting five key food purchasing requirements.
Number one, that agencies like, big organizations, public organizations like the city of Los Angeles purchase food that is nutritious. Secondly, purchase food that is sustainably grown. In other words, that adheres to agricultural practices that protect our environment. Number three, foods that are grown on farms where labor practices are fair. And finally, where there's humane handling of animals.
And lastly, to also only purchase food that provides opportunities for small and mid-sized farmers. Los Angeles Unified School District is among the many supporters of building a good food system here in Los Angeles. It has already begun implementing changes at schools to help promote a healthier lifestyle for students.
Breakfast in the classroom, where every child in the school district will get a breakfast at no cost to start the educational day. Right now, we have over 100 schools since the start of this year that have implemented it.
But it's not just public institutions. Councilmember Jan Perry's office has been pushing for changes in South L.A., such as limiting the number of fast-food restaurants there.
We developed design guidelines to slow down the overproliferation of fast-food outlets and coupled this with an effort to bring in grocery stores and sit-down food establishments to increase food choices in South Los Angeles.
And when it comes to food choices, Councilmember Paul Coretts also reminds Angelenos about voting yes on Proposition 37.
Proposition 37, which calls for labeling of genetically engineered foods for sale in California. It's about time that it's a simple food label because Californians have the right to know what's in their food.
While institutions are being asked to take a pledge to effect a change in the region's food system, city leaders say, "At the end of the day, it's up to each individual to take their own pledge to change their food habits." From City Hall, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Los Angeles is the first city in the country to sign the Good Food Purchasing Pledge. Despite our current economic conditions, America is still known as the land of opportunity and a local service organization recently hosted an event to assist small business owners. Cindy San Luis has more.
Bigger Better Business is one of the main programs of the Phi Beta Sigma fraternity, a social service organization involved in community outreach issues. Its local Capa Delta Sigma chapter recently held a seminar providing business and investment education to the public.
I am prepared today to talk briefly about the changes to the tax law for 2012.
Sharon Sanders, an IRS outreach and liaison specialist for small businesses and self-employment, stressed the importance of business owners setting up their businesses correctly.
If you set up your business correctly knowing that factoring in that you have taxes to pay, then you're most likely going to be more successful than if you get caught up and later on you say, "Oh, I didn't realize I had to pay this kind of tax or that kind of tax."
You'd be surprised how many people send things and forget that they're representing their companies.
Clarence Espinoza works for the Los Angeles World Airport, also known as Lawa, which oversees L.A.'s regional airports, including the Los Angeles International Airport.
We do a seminar on the first Wednesday of every month on how to do business with Lawa and by extension, the entire city of Los Angeles. We have a local preference program at the airport that also provides a bidding advantage of up to 8%. So there are different things that people can do to become engaged.
An Aflac representative spoke about the benefits of having supplemental insurance.
Aflac pays the insured directly to help them pay for medical, for any out-of-pocket expenses that they may incur when they're hurt or when they're sick.
It's hoped attendees left the seminar feeling more empowered and confident about starting and running their own bigger, better business. I'm Cindy San Luis for L.A. this week.
Councilman Bernard Parks's office hosted the Bigger Better Business Workshop. One-stop shopping for prospective entrepreneurs, the winner of the Sixth Street Bridge redesign, and the police turned to social media for help identifying potential victims of the Grim Sleeper Killer. These stories and more in City Beat. And the winner is HNTB. Mayor Antonio Villaregosa and Councilmember Jose Wezar recently announced the architecture firm HNTB as the winner of the international design competition for the redesign of the Sixth Street Bridge. HNTB's design featuring a ribbon of arches beat out that of two other design firms for the redesign of the 80-year-old Sixth Street Bridge, which is considered the most-at-risk bridge in the city to collapse during an earthquake. The majority of the funding for the $401-million project comes from the Federal Highway Bridge Program. Construction on the Department of Public Works project is expected to begin in 2015. Councilman Eric Garcetti has announced the latest way his office is helping to cut the red tape for aspiring entrepreneurs. Garcetti has teamed up with Jason Nazar, who created the website license123.com to announce a collaboration that will provide free, one-stop business permitting services to those who want to open a business in Los Angeles.
Lack of understanding of the business permitting process can result in delays and increase costs. Time is money, and that keeps businesses from opening or moving here.
We built this platform that literally within 30 seconds you're going to figure out every license and permit you need for your business.
Those needing permitting help can go to Councilman Garcetti's council office website, CD13.com, to access the License 123 link free of charge. Lonny Franklin Jr., the man charged with killing one man and 10 women in or near South Los Angeles, is behind bars awaiting trial. But police are still trying to identify the women whose photos were found in his home. In their latest move to identify 42 women photographed by the so-called Grim Sleeper Killer, the LAPD has launched a Facebook and Twitter page. Police say the photographs were taken between the years of 1976 and 2010. Simply go to Facebook or Twitter and enter LAPD Grim Sleeper. Anyone with information but wishing to remain anonymous can call 1-800-222-TIPS. The curb lanes on Wilshire Boulevard from Fairfax Avenue to Wilton Place have been repaved. Councilmember Tom Labonge allocated nearly $1 million in Proposition C funding geared for transportation projects to fix the gutter lanes of Wilshire Boulevard in his district. In total, a 2.7-mile segment of Wilshire saw resurfacing improvements with a 16-foot-wide section on each side of the street being redone. Nothing brings more joy than a care package from home. It's even more special when it's sent to soldiers serving overseas. Yana K. has more on a local hero who received a very special surprise.
LAPD Officer Steven Underwood has been away from his family for the last 10 months, serving in the military in Afghanistan. But a special care package with his name on it is headed his way, thanks to a nonprofit organization called For the Troops. Underwood was chosen to be the recipient of the organization's 60,000th care package.
I was amazed, just, you know, it's such an honor, you know, with him and being over there and just, it truly is. It's just an honor that they picked him to receive the package.
For the Troops is just one of several nonprofits, like the one you're seeing here, that makes care packages for soldiers. And for its 60,000th care package, For the Troops auctioned off the privilege of packing it at a recent golf tournament. That auction was won by an LAPD reserve officer who chose to send the package to a deployed reservist and fellow LAPD officer.
To get a little something from home, a little something that brings back the memories of not only their family but of the United States is a huge, huge boost to morale.
Started six years ago, For the Troops is based in Simi Valley. Its goal is to acknowledge the outstanding work and unwavering support of LAPD's military personnel deployed around the world. The nonprofit operates solely with the help of volunteers.
We're thankful we have our volunteers and our supporters.
Right, exactly.
So we can support our guys that are in harm's our guys and gals that are in harm's way.
Now, these care packages contain many staple items such as Q-tips, baby wipes, toothbrushes, toothpaste, games, snacks, and books. And the organization says they receive many emails and letters from troops thanking them for their generosity and support. I'm Yana K. for L.A. this week.
Steve Underwood is scheduled to return from duty in January. If you'd like to volunteer or donate, visit forthetrups.org. In this week's list of things to do, Photo Day at the Zoo, 1930s Los Angeles in pictures, and an exhibit on our nation's founding fathers and the documents they drafted. The 23rd Annual L.A. Zoo Photo Day on Sunday, November 4th, offers photographers the opportunity to capture natural-looking wildlife photos without having to go into the jungle. Photo Day provides photographers the tools required to create fantastic photos right at the zoo. Novice shuttlebugs will be able to attend hands-on workshops to learn the basics of wildlife and nature photography. For prices and additional information, go to LAZoo.org and click on the calendar link. A new Depression-era photo exhibit is now on view at the Central Library downtown through March 9th of next year. The exhibit, called How We Worked, How We Played: Herman Schultze's in Los Angeles in the 1930s, offers a glimpse of what the city was like at that time through the lens of Herman Schultze, a former Walt Disney Company engineer and photographer. His photos of Los Angeles in the late '30s reveals a working-class city showing signs of urban decay but also forging ahead with progress. The L.A. Central Library is located at 630 West Fifth Street downtown. You can also see a few of the digitized photos from the collection by going to LAPL.org. In the crucial weeks leading up to the election, the Skirball Cultural Center helps put today's politics into historical perspective with the exhibit Creating the United States on view through February 17th of next year. The exhibit showcases how our nation's founders managed to draft documents, including the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, through collaboration, competition, and compromise. On view are original documents and autographed letters by George Washington, John Adams, John Hancock, and Thomas Jefferson. The Skirball is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Go to skirball.org for more information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. An estimated 8,000 attendees came out to enjoy an outdoor musical festival where some big names in music took to the stage. Rasha Goel takes us to Balboa Park.
The scorching heat didn't keep Angelenos from enjoying the inaugural Balboa Music Festival at Balboa Park in Encino.
We're having a great time. It's beautiful.
Big names in music, including Robin Thicke and their reunited '80s group, New Edition, were among the lineup.
The music is good. The atmosphere is good. It's wonderful. The food, the drinks, everything.
It was also great for the Los Angeles Parks Foundation, which received a $2,000 donation from Councilmember Dennis Thine.
This check is going to help the Parks Foundation support the many groups, Boys and Girls Clubs and many other groups that they work with here at our city parks.
Officials say this isn't a one-time event. They look forward to next year, hoping to make it even bigger and better. From the San Fernando Valley, I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. this week.
Part of the concert proceeds also went to the L.A. Parks Foundation to support their continued work in programming and park maintenance. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Illegally parked cars? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
Come on, let's go.
Just a minute, I gotta finish this.
Wait, you're gonna post those pictures of Mary?
Yep, she thinks she's so hot.
But her mom and dad will see 'em. Her grandmother, her little sister, everyone she knows. It's gonna kill her.
Who cares, just a couple of pictures. It's no big deal.
No big deal? Don't. This has gotta stop.
Hi, I'm Renee, representing for Juventus from Venice. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning. It's Tuesday, October 30th, and I'd like to welcome all of you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. If we could please have it quiet. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, it is my understanding that we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alacon Buscayeno, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Ubez, Arcoresca, Coria, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Weston, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Corretts moves, Garcetti seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Reyes seconds.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if I could ask everyone in the council chambers to please rise, please rise for our flag salute, which will be led today by Mr. Tony Cardenas.
Thank you, Ms. President. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin? To pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Members and to our visitors, I'm sure all of you have been shocked by what you've seen on television where it relates to the severe storm that has hit the East Coast. It's my understanding that relief efforts are now taking place. If anybody is interested in trying to help, you can go to CNN.com/impact, and they will let you know the various things that are happening and how you can participate. But anyway, let us pray for our brothers and sisters on the East Coast. I know I have family in Georgia, Philadelphia, New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut, all of the places that have been hit very hard. So, Madam Clerk, with that said, why don't we begin to move through the agenda? If we could start out with our first few items?
Mr. President, there is a request to continue Item 2 to December 4th and to continue Items 9, 12, and 19 until... 9, 12, 19, and 23 till tomorrow, October 31st.
Without objection.
Items 1 through 9 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, Items 1 through 9, any specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote on that. Madam Clerk, let us open the roll. Oh, no, Mr. Parks.
We have special on Number 9.
Number 9, held by Mr. Parks.
Excuse me, Mr. President, Item 9 has been continued to October 31st.
Oh, Mr. Parks, that item has been continued until tomorrow. Okay, so let's open the roll. Mr. Labange.
13 special for the pending motion, that's all.
We haven't gotten there yet.
I apologize, I was misinformed.
That's a good response. Okay, now, if Mr. Labange agrees, I'm gonna ask you to open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And good morning, Mr. Rosendahl. Okay, let's go to our next item, our next set of items.
Items 10 through 17 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Mr. Labange wants to hold Item 13, Mr. Labange?
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
Pending motion.
Mr. Rosendahl. 15 for Mr. Rosendahl. 17 for Mr. Alacon. And do we have cards?
Cards on Items 10, 11, and 16.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, what do we have next?
Item 18 is a closed-session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, I do. That brings us... That brings up... No, wait. Shhh. Can we make sure that there are sergeants? Make sure their general public comment cards, they are on the way. They are on the way. So where does that bring us now, Madam Clerk?
On the supplemental agenda, Items 19 through 23 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Cards on Items 20 and 21.
Okay, wait a minute, Ms. Fogler, just wait a minute. Wait a minute. You are disrupting the meeting, just relax. Mr. Labange.
On Number 20, receiving file Number 20.
Without objection.
Thank you.
Other cards on Item 20, Mr. President?
Oh, there are cards.
Technical question, maybe City Attorney. If you receive it filing, do you need to take public comment?
Yes, because that's an action.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have cards?
Yes, cards on Items 20 and 21, and I believe there's a substitute motion forthcoming for Item 22.
Okay, let's hold that as well. Now, has everyone... Or sergeants have the public comment cards? Been placed? Okay. And what remaining items do we have that we can vote on?
There's no items to vote on that section, Mr. President. That takes counsel to items called special or presentations.
Okay. Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti for presentation. Mr. Garcetti, you now have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you all to the City Council and to our guests that are here in chambers and watching us on Channel 35. Each year, we highlight that October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of L.A., and we wear the purple ribbon. We remind ourselves that, of course, this is a 12 months a year, 365 days a year epidemic. But we take this month to highlight various aspects of this epidemic of domestic violence that affects our lives. And I want to thank the resource that has been working officially on behalf of this city since 1994 to make sure that victims and survivors of domestic violence have a voice, have advocates, and have a path out of this violence. Our own city's Domestic Violence Task Force, please give them a round of applause. Our Chair, Debbie Ash, has joined me, and together with Robin Sacks, our great Fox 11 news legal analyst, excuse me, and Commander Kevin McCarthy, on behalf of the Los Angeles Police Department, we are honoring these police officers who are behind me, who have made a difference in saving lives, in transforming lives, in being a light in the darkest days for those who feel that they have no way out. And together with the Domestic Violence Task Force that represents an incredible community of leaders, nonprofits, community groups, organizations, along with our departmental leaders, such as those from LAPD, and I think I saw our City Attorney, Carmen Trutanich, who's here as well. They collaborate to provide services to survivors of domestic violence in their darkest hour of need. And let me start with the LAPD officers who are here today. Commander McCarthy reminded us outside that 48,000 is the number that we should remember in Los Angeles. That's how many calls we had for our officers for domestic violence last year. 48,000. You can do the math. That's more than 100 a day. That's more than four or five an hour. Every single moment while I'm giving this presentation, statistically, there is somebody in LAPD who is rolling out to a domestic violence call. Carmen Trutanich mentioned it's 15% of the caseload of our City Attorney's Office, and the District Attorney's Office faces even more incredible cases of domestic violence. But it is an LAPD officer who are here today, these men and women, who are working to enforce the law against perpetrators of domestic violence and to make sure we get survivors the care they need and that perpetrators are held accountable by our system of law. And I also want to congratulate immediate past Chair Carol Tantow, who just received the prestigious award that she helped bring about, the Marjorie Browdy Award. But I couldn't think of a better and more deserving person. You've seen her in past years as a chair, and the task force voted to give her the award. Please give her a round of applause, and she is right here, always hiding in the background, but Dr. Marjorie Browdy, award winner. But before we honor one other group that we'd like to say thank you to, all of us really want to take this year's theme, which is DV, the hidden epidemic, to breathe air back into that balloon that sometimes deflates when we think, oh, domestic violence was something that we talked about a decade ago or two decades ago. It is here, it is now, it does not discriminate based on the color of your skin, based on your gender, based on your sexual orientation, based on your income level, based on your education. It's happening in Bel Air, and it's happening in Silmar. It's happening in Boyle Heights, and it's happening in Brentwood. It's happening in every community, and we have to take personal responsibility to make sure that we stop it from happening. And to any victim who is listening right now, I want you to know that there is help for you, that you are not alone, that we have the strength of this community, the Los Angeles Police Department, behind. And if somebody you know needs help, or if you need help, please call 1-800-799-SAFE. That's 1-800-799-SAFE. People are ready to help you 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I'd like to ask Debbie Ash to join me as we honor one of the great angels in this city as well, as Carol. But the Valley Cares Family Justice Center has been a beacon of light, a place of hope and of rebuilding lives, of bringing services together, be they legal, be they counseling, be they economic. And we want to honor the Valley Cares Family Justice Center. I'm gonna let Debbie say a couple things, and then we will present the certificate of commendation during this Domestic Violence Awareness Month to make sure that folks know that you can do something to break this cycle. We will do something, and we will end violence in our city.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. And we want to say thank you very much, hi. Thank you very much. We want to say thank you very much to the Valley Cares Family Justice Center for all the work you have done and continue on your work with domestic violence victims. So thank you very much.
I'd like to ask our City Attorney to say a few comments.
Morning, Mr. President.
Mr. City Attorney.
How are you?
Fine, sir.
From this angle, you're looking very well.
Thank you. You can visit us any day.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen and ladies, domestic violence is truly the hidden epidemic within the city of Los Angeles. Our office reviews about 11,000 police reports a year dealing with 11 domestic violence. Of the cases that we file, it equates to more than 15%. Domestic violence is like taking a stone and throwing it into a lake and watching the ripples hit the shore and cascade one right after another. Because domestic violence is not just one victim. It's not just the perpetrator versus the one, the person that they're striking, but it's the people in the family who are watching it, who grow up, who go out into the public and replicate what they've seen. It creates a domino effect of violence begets violence that begets violence. This, our office deals with the victims of domestic violence. We have advocates. The reason that I'm standing here today in the Domestic Violence Awareness Month is to tell the public that there is a lifeline, that the city of Los Angeles provides a lifeline. There is a national domestic violence hotline that they can call, 1-800... What is it? 799-SAFE, that's 7233. Call that number. There are people that will hold on to you, that will guide you, that'll get you through the process, because there's no reason for victims to have to go back and subject themselves to domestic violence. I want to thank our partners, the Los Angeles Police Department. I had mentioned earlier for Joe Buscayeno, Councilman Buscayeno, who was a senior lead officer before he became a councilman in the Harbor area, worked with Rainbow Services down there, that domestic violence calls are the most dangerous calls because you just don't know what's gonna happen, what's gonna blow up. And so I'm very proud of the men and women who wear the blue uniform in Los Angeles, who do the hard lifting on this. And Carol? Thank you. Thank you for your dedication to this issue, and thank you for bringing this hidden epidemic to the forefront. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Garcetti, we have several members on the queue, beginning with Joe Buscayeno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for bringing this important issue here before us at City Council. I want to stand and acknowledge my brothers, my sister police officers who are here being honored. As we all know, domestic violent calls is one of the most dangerous calls officers report to. And I have unfortunately had the opportunity to respond to a number of domestic violence calls and wearing the LAPD badge and be able to work with victims of domestic violence crimes and also make a number of referrals in the Harbor area. We are blessed to have the Rainbow Shelter as one of our resources that we offer. And there was a recent study, actually, working, I just met with the LAPD Domestic Violence Coordinator, who indicated that out of the number of crimes against police officers, almost 90% of them of those crimes, the suspect had a domestic violence crime attached to his rap sheet. And as Mr. Garcetti indicated, domestic violence can happen to anyone. And I had an opportunity to also mentor a couple teenagers who are in a dating relationship that included violence, and that was just disheartening to be in front of that. And I just want to, again, encourage anyone who's going through a domestic violence relationship to take advantage of the number of resources this city has to offer, specifically in my district, the Rainbow Shelter, who my sister Michelle had an opportunity to volunteer while she was in high school. So we thank you, we acknowledge you, we love you for all the work that you do, specifically the Domestic Violence Task Force on behalf of the city, and most importantly, to our, my brothers and sisters within the Los Angeles Police Department. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Carol and I go way back, and we're dear friends. And Carol, I'm especially here today to just to acknowledge you being the awardee. I'm gonna read a few notes and then just speak off the cuff. First, I want to extend my sincere congratulations to you, Carol, on receiving the Marjorie Browdy Award. And she was a dear friend of mine too, and her husband Marvin was one of the few in the beginning told me to run for this job. And I said, why should I run? He says, because you love people, Bill. I said, well, how do I win? He says, just continue that positive spirit. As we were driving to an event, he passed shortly thereafter. So the Browdys are always in my heart and in my prayers every day. You not only are a constituent, but you've been involved in many volunteer causes in our Venice area. You've taken a leadership role on the business owners in Venice, especially along Abbot Kenny. It's amazing the kind of leadership you've provided on Abbot Kenny and continue... It's amazing the kind of leadership you've provided on Abbot Kenny and continue to provide as we go forward with major new ideas for parking and other things like that. Back in 1968, the Free Venice Beachhead recognized you as one of the few of the notable women of Venice who are involved in their community for their work as a victim advocate. And as you know, the election's on Sunday. 1,600, over 1,600 people voted in the Venice. I mean, this was fantastic how that election was showing the involvement of people in Venice committed to the lovely community of which you exemplify. So, it's a great honor for me to be here, to honor you, one of my constituents and one of the great leaders. I've kept this badge here in my pocket all the time. I got my red tie on. But you know, domestic violence has to do with alcohol. And when are we going to grow up? We legalize alcohol, oh, it's okay, but yet we know that creates domestic violence, and we've taken other positions on some other drugs that my colleagues and I know where I stand on. I want to go into a political rap on that. But I do want to say alcohol is a problem, and people who get drunk tend to get violent. And when a woman gets beaten or a guy gets beaten, we need anonymous spots where they can be so that they can get the peace and freedom of getting themselves together. And anybody watching this, if you've got a problem, give us some calls, and we'll look at it and deal with it. Again, thank you, Carol. Bless you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Dennis Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the members of the Los Angeles Police Department, every single day you go to work, you do that job protecting and serving, and I remember when the commander and I were young police officers, it was called not domestic violence, but a family dispute. People didn't go to jail, go out there, try to counsel people, go on handle next radio call. And then it became a very serious issue, a crime issue, a felony. People went to jail because the criminal justice system realized that lives are at stake. So, to all the officers that are here from the various divisions, thank you for what you do every single day. We appreciate it. The public appreciates it. To Carol, thank you. I can remember coming in to committee the DART program, Domestic Violence Response Team, scrambling for money, trying to keep the program going. And those programs are so vital, so important, so critical to help people, to save people. My colleague Eric Garcetti, thank you for bringing this forward. It's a critical function, and all those officers that are out there working in the field, working detectives, doing the follow-up, it's a critical aspect that we do to protect and serve. So, congratulations. Can you show everyone of you, you've got little Joey here helping out?
Papa Joe.
Papa Joe. A couple of us have had time in law enforcement to realize what you go through every single day, so we do appreciate it, acknowledge you for that, and again, continue on with that mission, the great mission to protect and to serve the people of this great city. God bless you all, thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, it was a wonderful reception in the rotunda. And in the rotunda, just like in the chambers, there's columns, columns that hold up this building. You hold up the city officers, you hold up the city, and the city attorneys make sure it's corrected, true, because you have to be corrected, true. And the liberation that you give people in all your assignments, though, but the domestic violence, the children who witness it, the families who witness it, all that is very strong, and I thank you for it, as I thank you out there. Mr. Garcetti, I thank you for your leadership always. Carol, I thank you. Billy said 1968, but I don't think it was 68. I think it was like 98, Billy. He said 68, if I heard right. But anyway, we'll get it straight there. You're a great constituent of the 11th District, and Marjorie Browdy is the great wife of Marvin Browdy, who first started the anti-smoking campaign in stores. Can you believe it or not, you could smoke in stores, then elevators, then on and on, and somebody think there's a plaque outside for Marjorie and Marvin Browdy for what they did. But Debbie, thank you. Commander, thank you. And Carmen Trutanich, thank you, because you put a team together of city attorneys, because it is a, you keep that building up there. You keep the, you fight for the city every day, officers. But the city attorneys have to make sure you do it right and legally, and the guidance and the training that all goes. And OT Markis, Elliot Memberg, good job. You've been there a long time, and the late great Jimmy Tatro got you involved in Newton area. So, all that is key, that we take this time to celebrate this moment, but every day, because you really think about the people. And I was on a plane yesterday, and I saw, I walked the line, Johnny Cash. John Cash, his daddy beat him up. John Cash, his daddy beat him up, and then John had some problems with his first wife, not with June Carter, because they sang Jackson together, and they got it on together, but they did have challenges. You see that in Mitch pictures. We have to change all that to let people know there's a place to call, there's a place for help. Thank you, Mr. President.
Look at your clock, Mr. Labange.
I did, I did. I walked the line, I'm sorry, I went over it.
You walked the line a minute over, okay. Mr. Alacon.
I don't know, Tom, you threw me off when you said Johnny Cash had a problem with his first wife. We've got to call domestic violence what it is. And if he had a problem, it was domestic violence. And I don't know whose fault it was, but that was the key problem. And we have to stop being so polite to people and say, well, they just had an issue, they just have a dispute, they just, no. Domestic violence is domestic violence. And so, I want to commend the task force once again, and I'm just standing up to thank you for helping us with a particular problem that we still have to improve resources on, and that has to do with the LGBT community, where domestic violence is particularly unserved in terms of the service provision that is out there. There's just not a whole lot of resources to be able to deal with domestic partners, with LGBT victims of domestic abuse. So, I just want to thank the task force for working with us for the last couple of years on that special project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alacon. Back to you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Carol Tantow and Robin Sacks to say a couple of brief words to wrap up, but first, I'd like to give the names of the police officers we honor here today. Rampart Division Detective One Emily Raup, from Newton Division Police Officer Two Eric Rose, and Police Officer Two Kevin Rains. From Hollenbeck Division Detective Two Victoria Mulder, from Northeast Division Detective Three Paul Hinton. From Southwest Division Police Officer Stephen Jones II, from Harbor Division Detective One Ladonna Cecil Day. From 77th Division Police Officer Three Eric Melendez, and Police Officer Two Andres Cardenas. From Southeast Division Detective Three Carla Tyson, from Van Nuys Division Police Officer Three Kenneth Drucker, and Sergeant One Carl Taylor. From West Valley Division Detective One Kimberly Reiman, from North Hollywood Division Detective Two Andres Alegría, and Detective One Tanya Miller. From Foothill Division Janine Jones Detective One, and from Devonshire Division Detective One Richard Mokley. From Mission Division Detective One Max Phillips, from Topanga Division Detective One Jennifer Strohmeier. From OWB Sexual Assault Detail Detective Two Kimberly Porter, from Wilshire Division Detective One Sunny Garcia, from West Los Angeles Division Police Officer Two Jared Whitzer, and Police Officer Two Ray Barron. From Pacific Division Detective One Christine Wykoff, from Olympic Division Police Officer Two Omar Franco, and from Training Division Police Officer Three Avette Peredin. Please give them a round of applause. Robin Sacks from Fox 11 News.
So often, when you see me in front of a camera with a microphone, I'm out here pounding my hands and jumping out of my chair, talking about where the system screwed up, where someone failed, where there was a misstep in investigation. It's such an honor and pleasure being involved in something where the city has done something right, has done something that I can't complain about, something that I can't point out about, something that I can highlight for your pure great work in this area of domestic violence. I'm so honored to be part of the awards for 26 people who have made a humongous difference in the lives of people, in the lives of not just a one victim, but in their families, as Eric spoke about the ripple effect. And I just want to commend the city, the council, Eric Garcetti, Carmen Trutanich, Debbie Ash, and all of the law enforcement that are here, and say, I will be reporting good news about the city later on today.
Excellent. And Carol Tantow, to take us home.
I just wanted to say a couple of words to council. I would like to reflect upon the fact that I was appointed to the Domestic Violence Task Force by Ruth Galanter, but I need to tell you that when she approached me about doing this, I turned her down. Now, here's the issue. Each council member here has the option of having an appointee on the Domestic Violence Task Force. Not all of you do, and shame on you, because this is an organization that is so, so important that you are doing yourself and your constituents a disservice by not having an appointee that you know and talk to, serving on this board. When I first came on, Jim Hahn was our city attorney. That is a collaboration that is ongoing to this day. I worked with his office and Alana Bowman on developing the city's policy and protocols in support of employee victims of domestic violence. The Los Angeles City Domestic Violence Task Force is an integral part of the city family, and I'm very proud to serve on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. And again, thank all of you for all of the work that you do.
Do you guys want to do a picture? Sure. Come on. Bring your families. Tell me who we can cram in.
Follow us. Okay. Follow us. Just come. Follow us. 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 a month. What they are doing, and LAPD is on them, all 15 council manic districts, they find a house, sometimes they break into a house, or they somehow get into a house for five or six hours. They go on the internet. All of a sudden, a huge party explodes in your neighborhood. By the time they come there, what are the cops gonna do? There's 300 people there. They can't arrest them all. What crime did they commit? They don't know who actually set up the party. This is what happens. People, drug dealers, whatever, they go on the internet to the party sites, they see the party, they go to the party so they can buy hard narcotics. They go to the party, they make their deal, and then they leave the party. And the party disappears, and often, the owner of the house is, "Well, I didn't know what was going on." Nobody gets it. So now, the party patrol means, if you see a wild party in your neighborhood, you'll be able to call this number and get the cops out there now. This is something unique to LA, these bandit parties. So you're doing a good job on that. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to... No, Mr. Alacon.
Yeah, I just want to say, first of all, I couldn't agree more with what Mr. Walsh just said. I do want to make it very clear, this motion is relative to the 7th Council District only, and it's for the northeast San Fernando Valley. I introduced this motion, and I'm happy to provide the money to Mission Station, Mission Division in LAPD at their request. Captain Chamberlain requested that we do this, and I wanna... I pressed my button. I was gonna let this go on consent, but I thought it was important for me to express to the people of the northeast San Fernando Valley that although we introduced it last week, and there was a press conference, the project has not been implemented yet. And the reason I mention that is because this weekend, this Saturday, there was a party, a friendly gathering of young people, and somebody ended up getting killed. And that's exactly what this is intended to avoid. The reality of that situation is that a combination of alcohol, uninvited guests, and perhaps drugs created a violent setting, and the police were not informed about this party. The other reason I wanted to use this time to again say to the public in the 7th Council District, that if you have a party, tell the police in advance of the party, so that they'll know. First of all, it sets a more friendly tone in your conversation with the police department. Secondly, it lets them know that your party is intended to be a good party, a friendly party, and they'll be aware of it when they come on the scene. They won't be as concerned about whether this is an owner who is upset by the police showing up, and work with them. The Mission Station had 2,100 calls for parties last year. Twenty-one hundred. That's, you know, I got a partying district, and that's a good thing. We have people who are friendly, and we have all kinds of parties. But when you combine alcohol, and drugs, and uninvited guests, and particularly gang members who can enter into parties unwelcome, it's a very dangerous situation. And I don't care whether you're having a birthday party for a six-year-old, or a 50th anniversary for your grandparents. This is a very serious issue. I want to thank Captain Chamberlain for making the request. I'm pleased to allocate the money. And I only hope that we can learn from these experiences. We've done this in the past, and I absolutely believe it saves lives. But I hope that ultimately, our police department can incorporate this into normal operations again, where our budget does not allow us to get to that place. But fortunately, we do have some CRA money that's left over. So with that, I ask for your aye vote.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Alacon. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, thank you. Now, I want to move to public comment, or at least we'll take the first three public comment, general public comment cards, and then we'll get back into the agenda. Dr. Leroy Perry, my friend Percy Duran, and the former heavyweight champ, Lamond Brewster, please come forward. Go right ahead, Doctor.
Thank you. President Herb Weston, and members of the City Council, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name again is Dr. Leroy Perry, President of the Foundation for Athletic Research and Education. With me is one of our board members, Attorney Percy Duran, and former heavyweight boxing champion of the world, Lehman Brewster. Our original intent in coming here was to present 251 signed petitions supporting the creation of an inner-city boxing gym for the youth of our National Motor Palms area. We, however, feel that there is more at stake than just occupying a building. The future is our children, and that's the real issue here, our children. Our petition reads, "Dear Los Angeles Mayor Antonio Baragosa, Councilman Paul Corretts, Members of the Los Angeles City Council, We, the undersigned petitioners, citizens, residents of the Motor National area, need your help. There is an unabandoned firehouse, 10234 National Boulevard, close to Motor Avenue. For five years, it has been a gang drug hangout with graffiti, eyesore, and now a garbage dump. There is nothing in our community for our youth to do. This has been the aforementioned problem. The solution is as follows: Our community would like this abandoned firehouse to be converted through the Foundation for Athletic Research and Education, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit foundation started by Will Chamberlain and myself, to an LA city boxing camp headquartered for Mike Torsche's Shape Up America and Operation Fitness. The LA Inner-City Boxing Camp will be under the direction of Lehman Brewster, America's last heavyweight boxing champion and former WBO heavyweight champion of the world, 2004-2006. Our plan is to teach boys and girls boxing skills, sports science, and exercise protocol, nutrition, and other ways and means, so they can learn to help themselves as well as our community. All children will be invited to participate..."
Thank you, Doctor. You only can get two minutes. If I give you more than two, then I'm gonna have to give other people more. So if I can get Percy, followed by the champ. Good to see you, sir. We've seen you on the Klitschko story that's on cable, and you whooped him pretty good.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. I'm very honored to be here before everybody. My name is Lehman Brewster. I'm a product of everything that stands good for our community. I ask that you guys support us in helping us to get this gym and this community. The reason being is that I am a product of community centers. If I would have had to pay money when I was a kid, I never could have went to a gym to learn anything. I learned how to believe in myself, because my father wasn't there. I stayed away from drugs. It taught me to get in shape. It taught me discipline. I just ask that you guys give us a chance to help. Help you guys to make it easier on you guys, because I've seen a lot of police officers, for that matter. They come home from work, and instead of going home and taking it out on their family, they come to the gym, and they believe that energy, and as well as kids. It helped me to stay out of the streets. It's helped me to stay out of gangs, and it allowed me to go around the world and represent the United States. I've stood proud before the flag so many times. And all I'm asking is that you guys give us a chance. It's free for every police officer. It's free for every children, every child around the state of California, for anybody that will come under the age of 18, where I'm personally training everybody. I will not be out of this gym. I will be here training people personally. I just need your support. I support you guys. I thank you for supporting me. I love you, and God bless you.
Thank you very much, Percy Duran.
Good morning, President and City Council members. I'm here to support the project that's in Mr. Corretts's district. It's an abandoned fire station. As we talk today about domestic violence, about the gang killings, here you have an opportunity to help your community with these individuals who are so committed that they've gone out and collected signatures from the community to support this project. So with your help, hopefully we can do one more positive thing for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Two rows behind you, the fire department. Talk to the fire department. They're right behind you, Commissioner. Maybe they'll give you some advice. All right, more public comment here that we have. Anna Fox, please. Sean Murphy and John Walsh, general public comment.
Yeah, good morning, Pro Tim. Mr. J, I'm voting yes for Mr. J. It will create jobs, fix our streets, move the transportation forward quicker and faster. Vote... Anybody doesn't vote for Measure J, they're a hypocrite. Vote for Measure J.
Anna Fox.
Thank you. My comments are for Mr. Cardenas.
Yeah, if you could adjust your microphone to make comments to the whole of council, but he'll hear them.
I live on Ledwell Street, where there have been occupiers occupying 104620 Ledwell Street for the last 66 days. LAPD has been given very limited resources and support from your office. I personally called September 21st, few days after the issue started, to bring it to your attention. Everyone continues to say this is a political movement. No one wants to touch it. You're running for Senate. There are major concerns in your specific district that need to be addressed before you could take on more responsibilities. Mayor has dropped off to your office a proposal for budget cuts for city attorneys. That is not acceptable. We need more resources, more law enforcement, and we need the prosecutors to be able to have the resources, your specific support, the community's support, so when issues like this get brought up, we're not dealing with them on Day 65 like yesterday. Things have gone too far. The public has rights as well. They are exercising their First Amendment right. God bless them for living in a wonderful country that allows that to happen. Unfortunately, the rights of the community directly are impacted, and the rights of our security and safety and health are being at risk. We have over 50 occupiers there on a consistent basis, living in tents. It smells like Skid Row. They invite homeless people from Van Nuys Boulevard and Sepulveda to come onto the property. The people that stand behind the barricade are arrestable. All of this is public knowledge. This is not information that I have been privileged to. I insist and demand that they get city attorney's office, LAPD, get more support and time from you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Cardenas.
Fourth, thank you for coming forth once again. I just want to make sure that everybody watching understands, we are not New York. We don't disperse our resources by district like they do in New York. What we do in the police department and the city attorney's office is they get their annual budget, et cetera, and they do try their best to make sure that they bring the resources to bear where it's needed. LAPD has been involved already on this issue. The city attorney's office has been involved on this issue. Fortunately and unfortunately, fortunately for all of us, you're absolutely right. We live in a country where the Constitution prevails and people have rights. Unfortunately, with those rights, it takes sometimes a lot longer than we care to witness in order for us to legally deal with certain issues when they are that delicate. So I appreciate you coming forward. I know you've been talking to the staff in my office. They have been keeping me apprised. We were aware of what was going on yesterday with law enforcement that went onto the property, et cetera. So once again, thank you for coming, but I just want to make it clear to everybody that a council member doesn't dictate to the chief, you know, send 10 more bodies over there. Or we don't dictate to the elected city attorney to send 10 more bodies. Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas, if you want to... Oh, your deputy, meet Ms. Fox over at the ropes. Very good points there that you made. Mr. Walsh, thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. John Walsh.
Thank you. First of all, Rudy Bocanegra. We understand that he has some sexual harassment charges against him when he was working in Sacramento. They're covering it up. There's only one person to win. There's no sexual harassment charges. Again, there's only BS charges against Mr. Alacon. We want to find out exactly what is happening with the sexual harassment charges. Also, Luis Lopez for Assembly. Right now, we are going to make a major announcement about a new person running for office for mayor, a household name. Hollywood Highlands backs her. She has a million-dollar business in Hollywood. She's run before. She's run against Arnold Schwarzenegger and gave him a hell of a battle. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, we are introducing to the race another woman. Come to our website, Angeline for Mayor of the city of Los Angeles, so the world will see what we're talking about. She... As you can see, if you go to our website, the two biggest reasons you should vote for Angeline. Angeline, you may think this is a joke. It's not a joke. Angeline will be our next mayor. When the media is flocking, this is the official announcement, and instantly, no on Measure R... Measure J. No on Measure J. No on Measure J. No on Measure J. Brenda Carter was killed in an accident on the escalator, and her body was left on this... to die, to bleed to death at the Hollywood Highlands Station, because the sheriffs couldn't get there, because the MTA Board is more interested in their checking fares. It took the sheriffs 18 minutes to arrive at the scene of the bleeding dead person.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. One dude, one dude, please.
Yes, I am going to address several things. One of them is Occupy. Some people smell worse than any occupier, but they don't know it. And Occupy is trying to make sure that people have a home to go take a shower from time to time. Another thing is, Mr. Rosendahl, I'm running for your office from Venice Beach. I am postulating myself for... Not because I want to be part of your gang, I just want the publicity associated with it, okay? To let you know that there are better ways to run the show, and you don't have to be so slow on everything, just because we have so much red tape. We can do things a lot faster. What was the other issue? Why did you close Van Nuys? All you need is one little computer with one little camera. I used to talk to my people in Mexico eight years ago. I gave them a little camera, and they would go to an internet site, and we would video conference all the time. What is wrong with City Hall saying that everything costs thousands of dollars to run? It isn't true that Occupy destroyed your park. Your park had always been a piece of garbage. There was always garbage everywhere, and you tried to blame it on Occupy. You always tried to blame other people, but I'm not here to complain. I'm here to explain that we need to do things in a different way. We are smart enough. Read my book, The United World of Free and Clear, and I am running for Rosendahl's office. He didn't used to like homeless, but you know what? Anybody can be homeless. Remember the vets that are... the homeless vets? How can you...
Thank you very much. From Van Nuys, Donna Piraman. Donna Piraman, come on up, followed by Miriam Fogler. You're right afterwards, Miriam Fogler, the pride of Birmingham High. Here we go.
Please let Miriam go first. I'm very nervous. Please let Miriam go first, please.
I'll do it for you right now. Come on up here. Miriam, thank you. Donna, you sit in the second row right there, so you could jump up there. Get rid of those butterflies.
You know, if you notice, I have my walker, because I can't stand and walk, and my back is killing me. So please open up our video conferencing in Van Nuys. You know, like, we can just have a camera there, and it'd be very cheap. So you people have no excuse to it. Inexcusable. Vote no on 30, 31, 32, 33, 34. 35, 37 is iffy. I don't know. But 36, 38, 39 are no. 40 is iffy. J is no. A is no. B is questionable. Cardenas shouldn't be going on. He's an incumbent. I think that David Hernandez should be given a chance. He's an independent. On the other hand, Alacon, he has not committed any criminal acts. I think the other guy, in my opinion, I got a notice that he might have sexual harassment, so I don't want him in. So I'm endorsing Alacon for the Assembly. As far as people running for two offices at the same time, shouldn't be done. Like, there's a gentleman named Bloomingfeld. He's running for two consecutive different offices. The law should be changed. In the state of California, we have people that are running while they're concurrently in office, running for office. Or, such as Bloomingfeld, he's running for two seats, and whatever one he wants, he's just gonna just throw a toss of a coin and take whatever he wants, and the other seat will be vacant. So how can we have such a representation? You people need to turn our video conferencing on. This is absolutely criminal that you're not allowing us to speak. And Matt Dowd, we have a right to speak. How come your man doesn't come down here and speak good enough for women? And also, you have no right to tell us that we have no right to speak.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Donna Piraman.
Anyway, I come to the chamber, and you're not ready. There's no comma cards on time, and there's no agendas. Anyway, and Matt Dowd thinks we shouldn't have the right to speak. He can sue for millions of dollars, but he doesn't believe in free speech, or he wouldn't have asked. Thank you for closing down the video conference. He hasn't really closed this down at all. We don't need more sales tax or parcel taxes. We need, as I said, no on 30, no on 31, no on 32, no on 33, let's see, no on 34. Yeah. No on 30... That's okay. No on 39, no on 38, and no on JJJ. No on J. That's just a continuation of unfair sales tax. And no on A. We don't need more sales tax or parcel taxes. People are having a hard enough time living as it is, and then they want to put a lot more these on the ballot, and they could even have more, even coming in on March 2013. We have to stop doing this. And I wouldn't vote for Dennis Zinn for Controller, and I think we should vote for Alacon, because the only thing he did was not live in his house. At least he's not being caught for sexual harassment. And Bloomingfeld is not ripe for running for Assembly and running for City Council next year. Why is he even going in if he wants to go out? That doesn't make any sense. You know, I don't know who talked him into it. Anyway, what we gotta do is that none of these projects are gonna be taken. When you vote on J, all you have to do is the rail projects, and they're taking it away from the regular buses. So anybody takes regular buses, hey, Sean Murphy, if you like your regular buses, they're gonna go away when your J goes in. So good luck with your J. No on J.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment. I do want to take a minute to say I have a special visitor with me today. To my left is a nephew who flew in this morning from Florida, David. So David, welcome to Los Angeles. And when you go home, you tell your grandfather that you saw your uncle at work with a tie and shirt and a tie on. Okay, now let's move to item 16, which is called special by Miriam Fogler.
Again, folks, I should have a right to speak on this behalf of Recita Centennial. Matt Dowd had no right to tell me I can't speak on it, that I should have a right... Van Nuys video conferencing open. Anyway, this thing was good. I wish I could have gone, but I heard it was good. The only thing is that I wish that we'd had elections. They would have the elections more flexible with the neighbor council. That's what I heard, that they're having elections simultaneously while they're having their centennial. It just seemed ironic. But the fact is that Van Nuys didn't get the recognition that we see, and we should all be thankful for the San Fernando Valley, that they have 1 million votes, and the video conferencing counts. In Recita Centennial, people have a right to be heard in the valley, okay? You're gonna have to turn that thing back on. Give us a little camera. It doesn't cost any money.
Mr. President, she's not talking about this item.
Stay on the item. Okay, she's finished. On this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
14 eyes.
Okay, now we're going to continue item 18 until November 7th. And Mr. Kerkorian, it's my understanding, we want to continue 21 until tomorrow. We'll go to item 20, John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org, followed by Dow House Dude.
Won't take me two minutes. John Walsh blogging, as you said. Or just go to Walsh Confidential. And for identification purposes only, Angeline for Mayor 2013. This concerns sidewalk projects, curb improvements, beautification projects for public transit patrons. Well, as you know, a public transit patient was bled to death at the Hollywood Highland Station and they kept it quiet for two days. But other than that, we need street furniture, we need Hollywood to look good, and we are 100% in favor of the LaBange-Garcetti motion. HollywoodHighlands.org, come to us. And within 24 hours, we're gonna do a story that will rock the city. Something new. It will rock the city.
Thank you, Mr. Dude.
Yes, on this issue, it relates to everything I'm saying about housing for everyone, in the sense that if we all had a residence, we would all fix the streets a lot more effectively. I ride my bicycle because the police took my car, you know, thieves with a license. But when I ride my bicycle, I find that the most dangerous part of riding the bicycle is the street, because it's not fixed. There are huge holes. Streets like, as important as, what's the name of that big street that starts downtown and ends in Santa Monica? wheelchair. There is holes all on the side of the street there. And I have to dodge buses and all things just to avoid the holes. But I see millions of parking meters everywhere, all over the city that are supposed to go, the money's supposed to go to fixing the streets. Where does the money go? That's a hell of a lot of quarters going someplace mysterious. See, I'm not complaining, I'm explaining. City Attorney, you look like the guy from Monopoly. Anyway, you know, that's what it is. We get a lot of money in City Hall and we don't get things done. Why? Because we're dealing with red tape, we're dealing with... Dude, how much can you do it for? $3 billion? Ooh, that sounds great. How much am I gonna get back?
Stay on the subject.
That is the subject. We don't get things done because we do something else with the money. That is the subject.
Thank you. Okay, on this item, let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, I believe Mr. LaBange requests to have his item received and filed.
Okay, so then without objection. And then let's move to item 10, called Special by Cards. Sean Murphy, John Walsh, Miriam Fogler. Sean Murphy, are you here? Okay, John Walsh. Mary Ann, Miriam, come forward. On item 10.
What's this regarding? What's the subject? Yeah, what's the subject?
What was the question?
What was the number 10?
Yes, it's number 10.
Is this the REAP?
No.
There wasn't enough agendas here, so I didn't have one.
Then why would you fill out a card to speak on that item if you didn't know what it was about?
Well, I read it before on the computer.
Let's speak on it now, then.
Okay, what is this one?
Port of Los Angeles.
Oh, the port. Okay, let me tell you something. If you're going to ask people to start over from scratch, you're asking people to change their, the way they do their business down there, you need to find a way, a cost-effective way to save money and not to put them out. Because you're talking about people who, this is one of the vital lines of employment in the city of Los Angeles. So, you need to be very careful not to put people on the unemployment.
She's not talking about this item.
Be on the item.
So, you know, I'm just telling you right now, I think you need to make a word of caution. I think there should have been an ad hoc committee, created to study on this for six months and then bring this back and then we can make sure we have the money saved for the city and the port. We don't want to lose any jobs, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, on this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Okay, let's move to item 22. Miriam Fogler, Donna Peerman, Pat McCosker.
Substitute motion has been circulated for this item.
Okay.
We can't be for parcel taxes, folks. We got Proposition 13. This is, this should not be, should be illegal. It should be brought before the Assembly, the State of Capitol, and made a law that they can, you cannot pass parcel taxes here. Okay, it has to be, you can't do this. You have to do it through the way that you go through, for the proper channel, through raising taxes according, putting ballot measures for Proposition 13. I think you just want to circumvent 13 or find a way of getting rid of it. So, homeowners, apartment dwellers, don't pass this because all it will do is raise your rents. Vote no on all increases against property taxes, parcel taxes, no. You don't want to increase your, what?
Sales tax.
Oh, and the sales tax too, is nothing to do, not relevant. Anyway, so that's the main thing, is that we need to protect the homes, the apartments, and the businesses. Because if we're not gonna have anybody living here, if we're gonna be taxed of our homes, especially the sales tax, I know it's not relevant, but that's gonna really hit us hard. So everything is gonna be taxed really bad here if you're gonna do all this. Taxing is not the answer. Thank you.
Okay, Pat McCosker, Donna Peerman, just keep, come on. Pat, you're closest. Good to see you.
Good morning, good to see you too. Thank you for the time. Notice there's a couple of things on the agenda today that might, that have the potential of restoring city services, putting the question before voters, letting them decide whether or not they want to restore some things. I'm glad to see that Parks, that there's a measure regarding Parks, because that's public safety too. We firefighters absolutely support the idea of, you know, fully funding Parks, keeping them open, keeping kids in programs like that. Want to say though, that I want to ask you to do more, to do more than just fully fund those Parks, to bring in enough revenue to ask people if they want to restore the fire department as well. You've said, I don't have to tell you because you've said many times, that your top priority for restoration as the budget improves is restoring your fire department, having enough firefighters and paramedics on the streets to reduce response times, to enhance public and firefighter safety. And so I'm just here today because this item is about putting things on the ballot, asking voters whether they want to restore badly needed city services. And I want you to do that for the Parks, I want you to do that for the fire department and any other department where there's a need, and it's, that's all of them basically. And I want you to know that we're here to help in that effort. Anything that we can do to help in that effort. We've actually polled the public on this issue ourselves, and we found that they were very much in favor, a few years ago, before all the cuts happened, very much in favor of restoring our service and we believe others as well. So anything that we can do to help, I'm encouraging you, please put this before the voters. Thank you.
Donna Peerman.
If you believe they're gonna use the money for 2013, I have a swamp I want to sell you. They have not done this, all these things have gone downhill, no matter how many taxes they put down. It's over here now, they've even, they got enough taxes on here to gouge an elephant. And now they want to do on 2013 and they have, no matter how many taxes they do, and it seems to go away on something else. They seem to waste it. There's, they don't use it for the items, they say. They come up and they say they're gonna use it for police and it's not been used for police. They're gonna use it for the schools, they don't use it for the schools. So, this is just an idea of taking everything away from everybody, so nobody will be able to live, for to live. We don't need any more sales tax. And I luckily don't see anything on parcel taxes, but I probably didn't even put that down because they'll know that people want to see something on parcel tax. People are being already forced out of their homes and people can't afford to live in the apartments. So, we can't have any more, we can't have any more of these taxes. And I'm totally against tobacco tax. I mean, so like a pack of cigarettes, you know, my people might not be against, but it's like, probably only really cost a dollar and it's now $5. And that's what is going up with all the items. People can't afford to get healthy foods because, you guys want to have healthy foods? Well, let's make it affordable. You're not gonna be able to do that if you have sales tax. And if you go in the sales tax for the schools, kids can't afford to buy the books, so, and the supplies. So, what are we gonna have, a 10%, 50% sales tax? I mean, what point is it gonna stop? Because pretty soon we're all just gonna drop dead because we can't afford to live. Except for the rich people and the city council members and our mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, to Mr. Parks and Mr. Alakon, this is just a substitute motion. We're gonna have the discussion tomorrow, unless you have to speak on it today. But no, I'm gonna continue this until tomorrow.
That's fine.
So this vote is a procedural vote. Richard?
Okay, I was just, this is just to carry, this is a vote to have this discussion tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, it's not on the substance of the motion? Okay, and I would recommend that we amend the language that says, present other options to present all options?
That's fair.
Because it's a little unclear.
That's fair. Because I know that there's, I know that Mr. Parks wanted to discuss, had questions where related to one area. So basically, what this does, will substitute this. Then tomorrow, we will be able to discuss any and all options.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, okay, so with that said, no one else is in the queue. We've held public hearings, so we will not hold a public hearing on this tomorrow. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. I did not hear Mr. Garcetti.
He was trying to vote no, I watched him, but it didn't go with no.
But still, Mr. City Attorney, can't we register him as a no vote without taking the vote over again? So let's do that. All right, so tomorrow, we will have that very, very happy and exciting discussion. That brings us to Mr. Rosendahl, item 15. Do I have cards? No cards, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Could I ask the great leaders at the fire department, Captain Daniel Curry and Chief Trevor Richmond, to come on up to the center? Folks, I just want you to know that what we're dealing with is the climate change that we have in this great city. Every time the winds pick up, every time we go red flag, we worry in the canyons throughout this great city. Look, we are subject to earthquakes, we all need to be sensitive to that. But those who live near the brush and near the mountains are subject to wildfires. And we know wildfires, we've experienced them all along. Well, a new idea came up to deal with Mandeville Canyon. You know, Mandeville Canyon is unique weather and it's a micro weather like everything else is. I live in Mar Vista, my temperature in my house is always between 55 and 85 for the most part, usually between 65 and 80. It's just the uniqueness of our Southern California reality here. So, we're putting together a weather station that will provide Mandeville Canyon and the surrounding communities for fire safety. And if I could ask the chief and the captain to tell us what we're talking about here?
Well, first, councilmember, thank you very much. Trevor Richmond, the Planning Section Commander. And I want to thank you for your leadership, you and your staff, on moving this, this concept forward. I'd also like to thank Councilmen Weisar, Reyes, and Garcetti for supporting the Mount Washington ROAS site, as well as Councilman Englander for his support of the Porter Ranch location that we're very, very close to getting installed. We have a real treat here today because with me I have Captain Dan Curry. Captain Dan Curry is our department's weather expert. So if you have any questions related to weather, he's the guy you want to ask. So I'm gonna let him answer this question with regard to the benefits of a remote automated weather station, so.
Thank you, chief, and thank you, Mr. Councilman, for allowing us to speak to you today on this issue. There are 2,200 remote automated weather stations in the Western United States, of which 20 are part of the Los Angeles County Fire Department's network of weather stations. And one of those is the Mount Washington ROAS Remote Automated Weather Station located in the Mount Washington area. And we have the pending one in Porter Ranch. We have a gap between Beverly Hills and Topanga. There is no remote automated weather station between those two locations. As you know, this is a known fire corridor in the city of Los Angeles. We can look at the Bel Air Brentwood Fire of 1961, we can look at the Mandeville Canyon Fire of 1978, and we can look at the San Diego Freeway that cuts through the heart of the Santa Monica Mountains, right in this key area. Auto fires and other types, we have a chance there to capture weather with this weather station that will allow us to model the vegetation in that area and better predict fire danger for this particular location in the city of Los Angeles.
And that's great, and you know, I put some money toward it, squeezed it out of what I had left in the budget, and the community is raising money. And I'm very excited about the cooperation between the Mandeville community and my office and with you. Explain where we get the rest of the money and get it all together. How long do we, are we gonna do an EIR or not? People wanted to know. And if we are, is Mount Washington, Porter Ranch locations as well? Explain the EIR process in this regard.
I'll let the chief do that.
Right now, the EIR process for remote automated weather stations is if the remote automated weather station is going to be installed over dirt, it does not require an EIR. It, if it's going to be part of a letter of agreement, in particular, the one that we had in the Porter Ranch area was a little bit unusual because we had a letter of agreement with the gas company to install that remote automated weather station. And because of that, the gas company performed their own internal EIR because it was on their property. So we honored that EIR and we're working through the legislative process to get that remote automated weather station installed.
Well, that sounds good. So the action we take today is what?
The action you take today is you approve the forward movement of beginning the funding of this remote automated weather station in the Mandeville Canyon area. And assisting the fire department in better predicting fire behavior in that microclimate.
Well, thank you very much for that, and I might also do a shout in that regard. The other day, when we had the fire in Sullivan County, Sullivan Canyon, not only were I talking to my constituents, but to the fire department, Brian Cummings, he was right on it, you guys got on it quickly, you put it out. And then every time we're worried about a red flag moment, you've given me a full engine company in the Palisades. So I can say nothing but thank you for supporting us in moving forward. And the people in the canyon are putting their money where their mouth is. It's a cooperative effort. And colleagues, I'd like your unanimous support so we can go forward with this project. Thank you very much, chief and captain, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. LaBange.
Yeah, Mr. Rosendahl, very good idea, especially in that area of the city of West Los Angeles, which had one of our biggest fires this year, as you know, right by the Getty Center. And Captain Curry, I want to thank you. Your family has been a great contributor, fire department.
And Captain Curry, I want to thank you, your family has been a great contributor, fire department. Tom Curry was a great fire chief for Los Angeles, so please give him my regards. Just, just if I could ask the chief, get back to us on Maholand Drive, from the Coiga Pass all the way through Sepulveda Pass, I believe, if you started at 76es, we have five or six stations that are there. Should we locate some of these at these fire stations, work with the neighborhood councils, the neighborhood association's always so supportive, please look into that, vote yes for Bill's bill, and look into that to see if we could do enhanced weather station monitoring from the Coiga Pass West, and also, I would say, too, to bring it over to Highland Park, sometimes through the, those hills, they also have, the Arroyo has challenges.
Right. Yeah, the installation of, the installation of ROAS is a very strategic process. We often rely on the knowledge of experts to help us locate those devices, because their location is critical, so.
Got it, just get back on, I'll follow up, too.
Thank you, thank you so very much. There are no other speakers on the queue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Okay, it's my understanding, Madam Clerk, you want to make a clarification on one of the previous items we voted on?
Yes, Mr. President, for item 22, just for clarification, what council voted on today was the question of whether to substitute the motion, and that passed 12 to 1, as amended. So the substitute motion will be before, and the item was continued till tomorrow. So tomorrow, what will be before council, will be the substitute motion as amended.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and members, tomorrow could be very lively and a little longer than normal. So, Madam Clerk, is there any more business before this body?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, let's consider those posted and referred.
Oh, and, Mr. President, there's a request for item 15 to go forth with.
Without objection.
The desk is clear.
Thank you. Mr. LaBange.
Very quick, fast trip to our sister city of Bordeaux, France. We've been selected as a city of honor in 2014, and I look to these young staff members around here, under Mayor Bradley, I got involved with the Sister City program over 30 years ago, which gave me a great opportunity to travel. So if you want to get involved with our Sister City program, see our office, but in June of 2014, we're gonna ask Avoc to lead us to Bordeaux, and as we celebrate the wonderful partnership, the 50-year partnership with the city of Bordeaux. In addition, on Friday, with the ambassador to the United States, Mr. Rifkin, we dedicated a streetcar in the city of Bordeaux, named after Los Angeles. So they love us much, and bring great regards. Au revoir.
Oh, you just came back international. I'm impressed with you, Mr. LaBange. Okay, if I could get everybody in the council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions, adjourning motions, we're gonna start with Mr. Rosendahl. And if we could be quiet.
And Mr. Coretts will also finish this with me, folks. You know, the 405, we all know about what's been going on there, and the closures, and this and that, but unfortunately, one of the workers on October the 11th tragically passed away. Alfredo Figueroa was described by his coworkers as a kind-spirited man and dependable coworker. He lived with his family in Lancaster and enjoyed his free time, I might be biased on this, by raising chickens and turkeys and playing with his dog. And Mr. Coretts, since it happened on our 405 that you and I both cooperatively work with, I look forward to your comments as well.
Adolfo, like countless men and women working in construction across Los Angeles, unstintingly faced daunting challenges and tough conditions in order to help build a better future for the city and for his family. Adolfo is survived by his wife of 21 years, Maria, as well as their kids, Judy, Daisy, and Adolfo Jr. He was the definition of a good father and loving husband. He was always very proud of his accomplishments and those of his family, including his daughter, Judy, who is attending UC Davis. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Coretts, Mr. LaBange.
If we could have all members on that.
Thank you. Members, I ask, we adjourned member of Alan Kitchenbaum, who died at a tragic age of 51 years old. He was a producer for television and comedy writer, Raising Hope, My Name is Earl, Yes Dear All, which he was very involved in. He's found, he passed away on Friday tragically, survived by his wife, Vicki, and their daughter, his father, as well as many family members. Also, I ask, we adjourned member of Wolfgang Men, he was the, very involved with our Berlin Sister City in Berlin. He lived a much longer life, born in 1944, excuse me, 1924, lived a full life. I met him in Berlin at this festival, which celebrated our film relationship with Berlin some years ago. He survived by many, many grandchildren, and children as well. Wolfgang Men's Berlin, thank you.
Okay, and before we go to the next one, if we could go forth with on item 5, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Colleagues, I ask, we adjourn today in memory of George Sturgis Pillsbury. Maybe Mr. Rosendahl would like to join me, this is Sarah Pillsbury's father, who passed away. George Sturgis Pillsbury, a leader in Minnesota commerce, politics, civic, and philanthropic life for more than a half century, has died at the age of 91. He bore one of Minnesota's most storied names, the great grandson of 1880s Minneapolis mayor George Pillsbury, the grandson of Big Miller, Charles Pillsbury, the builder of the flour milling Pillsbury Company, and the great nephew of Governor John Pillsbury. His maternal great-grandfather was Civil War-era General Samuel Sturgis, for whom Sturgis, South Dakota, is named. Pillsbury, a Republican who served in Minnesota Senate from 70 to 1982, was an independent thinker with a bipartisan streak. "As a person, as a politician, he never met anybody he didn't like," said his son, Charles, of New Haven, Connecticut. Democrat, Republican, socialist, he was always open to discussion, and that's why people liked him. He also had a lot of integrity, he stood for something, and he was the last member of the Pillsbury family to work for the company. After graduating early from Yale University in December 1942, he enlisted in the Marines, serving as an officer in the Pacific during World War II. After the war, he returned to Minnesota and worked at the Pillsbury Company, rising to group vice president over a period of 24 years. In 1970, he was elected to state senate, he focused on government operations, tax policy, education, and reproductive rights for women as a Republican. George Pillsbury was active more recently in 2008. He broke with the GOP to publicly support Barack Obama for president. He backed Independence Party candidate Tom Horner for governor in 2010, and just this month, he held a fundraiser for DFLer Jim Graves, a moderate businessman running against U.S. Representatives Michelle Bachmann in the 6th Congressional District. Pillsbury was a bipartisan, unpretentious, outgoing, warm, and inclusive man. He was straightforward and an old-fashioned fiscal conservative, who loved new ideas like employee stock ownership programs back in the 1970s. He made and kept friends from presidents and European royalty to winners of the Pillsbury Bake Off, which he and Sally attended faithfully for more than 50 years, and he loved Minnesota sports, particularly hockey. He and his wife Sally has been significant patrons of numerous causes and organizations, from Planned Parenthood and the Guthrie Theater to Pillsbury United Communities. He was devoted to Minnesota, was a great American, and he lived and died at Brackets Point on Lake Minnetonka, in a house that once belonged to his late brother Eddie, and next door to his parents' home in which he was born. In addition to his wife Sally and sons Charles and George, he was survived by two daughters, Sarah of Los Angeles and Catherine of Newton, Massachusetts, and 10 grandchildren. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Rosendahl.
To what Mr. Garcetti said, that his daughter, as was just mentioned, Sarah Pillsbury, lives in Venice. I've known Sarah since 1972. She got very heavily involved in the politics of that campaign. We've remained friends ever since, and a whole group of people like her, who are heirs to fortunes, have gotten together and continue to get together. One of my joys in life is connecting people, and I connected a couple of dozen folks who are like Sarah Pillsbury, who are heirs to money, who continue to do incredible community work. Sarah's been involved in homeless issues in Venice, she's been involved in community activism in Venice, and I say to my sister Sarah, sorry for the loss of your dad, I'm glad he made it to 91, and I appreciate Mr. Garcetti making the adjourning motion today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more adjourning motions? Members, this meeting is adjourned.